Good morning, everyone. I'm calling this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Alabama Community College System to order. We are meeting via Zoom due to COVID-19. This would be our ninth board meeting, regular board meeting via Zoom. We welcome everyone that's viewing us on the Internet, and we appreciate your interest in the business of the Alabama Community College System. We thank the Chancellor, his staff, all the Presidents and their staff for the work that's gone into getting the preparing for this meeting and presenting recommendations that this board will will consider going forward. At this time, I'd like to recognize Pastor DJ Stenard of Destiny Church in Millbrook. We're so thankful to have Pastor Stenard to give our invocation this morning. And Pastor Stenard, you have the floor, sir.
Wow, no one ever tells me that. They always tell me I have to be quiet and sit down. I appreciate you all so much. Good morning. What an honor. I'm truly honored that I had the opportunity to come share with you all and spend some time. It's not too often that someone calls and asks me to share my dissertation on the Old Testament, but I was really excited that that's where this was going this morning. But honestly, I am very thankful that we have the opportunity to do this. I'm thankful for for each and every one of you and your hearts, your servant hearts, to go forth and continue to produce good fruit, even though I understand the sacrifice that takes. And I know what it's like to serve and to be a servant. And I'm so thankful for you that you have that willingness to put other things aside to look out for the best of other people. And it's such a wonderful opportunity to actually just come and share with you just a little bit this morning because your dedication to our education system, your dedication to our, just this state alone is just amazing. And I thank you for that. I know what it takes to just give your time and give your effort to the people that some people just will never know. And the good part is, is you're going to make changes. You're going to give people opportunities. You're going to you're going to give people opportunities to do things in their lives that you'll never see, and you'll never see the rewards of that. You'll never see the fruit of that. But God's using you in a mighty way to do that. I love that. I love that it says in Romans 8:28 that, and we know in all things, God works for the good of those who love Him, who have been called according to His purpose. And I believe each and every one of you this morning have been called according to His purpose to be here at this time on this Zoom call in this board because you are doing things that God has already put in play a long time ago. And I thank you for that. I thank you for your obedience. I thank you for your sacrifice and everything that you do. And I was praying this morning just for a word and saying, God, just give me something for them. And I don't believe that I can tell you probably anything about what you do and how you do it. You're all very successful in what God's called you to do. And but I really believe you need some encouragement this morning because I understand even through times of COVID, and now we're doing Zoom calls and we're doing all this. It's easy to to be so caught up in a lot of things to, it's easy to forget the goodness that's coming through you that God's using you for. So I want to encourage you this morning, and it took me to First Thessalonians 1:3 through 4. So if you have your bibles, go ahead and open them. I just, I just love, we do outline all the time now, so it's good. But but it says in verse 3, it says, "We remember before our God and Father, your work produced by faith, your labor prompted by love, and your endurance inspired by hope in our Lord Jesus Christ; for we know, brothers and sisters, loved by God, that He has chosen you." And I want you to know this morning that you have been chosen for this moment in time, and you're making decisions that are going to affect, it's going to have a ripple effect for years to come, and I appreciate that. But what I love about that, it says that you have a work produced by faith. So your faith in God, and I love that, that we have faith, that God's in charge, that He's using us, that that He has this mighty plan and purpose in our life, and as long as we submit to Him and we just obey Him, guess what? He's going to use us in a mighty way. So our work produced by faith, and then our labor prompted by love. You obviously have a love, not only for your communities, not only for the school system. You have a love for this state, a love for this country, and I thank you for that. I thank you that your labor of what you do is prompted by love. And I'm just so thankful that we have individuals like yourself that are willing to come forward and serve in this capacity. And then you have endurance inspired by hope. And hope is that sustaining, sustainable power that drives us, that keeps us moving forward to make things better. You know, I have a sign behind me. This is our boardroom where we meet, and behind me it says, "We can make it better. We can make it better." And I believe that everything we do is we come together and we surrender to God, that we can make it better when we just put our minds to it, and we let God guide us and lead us, and we just submit to Him. So you can make it better. You can make this state better. You can make this country better, and you can make this world better just by doing what God's asked you to do, and I thank you for that. So it's the faith, the love, and the hope. It's the work produced by faith, the labor prompted by love, and the endurance inspired by hope. So I thank you for that. And I just want to pray this morning, let's just, let's just open this up and let God come in and do what He does best, and that's guide us and lead us. So if we can all just pray together, let's just surrender to God this morning. So I thank you, Lord. I thank you, God. We thank you, Lord, just for your love. We thank you, Father. We can, we woke up this morning. We thank you for the breath in our lungs, God, and we thank you for your love. We thank you for your forgiveness and your grace and your mercy in our life. And Father, we thank you right now just for these individuals online, this board, Father God. I thank you for the board, all these trustees that come together to serve, Father God, and they serve under you, Father. And I thank you for the governor and her heart and her leadership. And Father, right now, we just, we just, Father, we ask you to search our hearts, God. We ask you to anything that's not you, anything that's that's stopping us from staying focused right now, God. I ask that you just remove that right now, Father God. We just, we just have to surrender to you at this moment. So Father, we just pray right now, Father God. I pray, Lord, that your knowledge, your wisdom lands upon each heart and mind this morning as we, as we go forward, guide us, lead us, God. We just thank you, Lord. You are so, so powerful, God. And Father, we just, we just ask right now that the Holy Spirit operate in a mighty way through each one of these phone lines, through this Zoom call, Father God. Wherever we're meeting, Lord, we just surrender that to you, God. Holy Spirit show up right now in each home, wherever it is, God, and just guide us and lead us. Father, we ask you right now, Father, I just ask you to bless them. Father, bring favor upon their families, bring favor upon, man, just their towns, their cities, their districts. Father God, we just surrender all that to you. Father, we declare healing in this land. Father, we declare healing over those that are sick right now with the virus, God. Father, we ask you to touch them right now, Father. We just declare healing over their body. Father, we just declare peace and comfort for those that have lost loved ones in these recent days, God. We just know that you are a Comforter, and Father, you just love us. So wrap your arms around us right now, Father God, and just comfort them. And Father, we just surrender this to you. We know you have a great plan and a purpose in in our community college system, Father God. And I know that we're going to see that play out. And I thank you for those that are here today that are on this call, Father God, those that are just, they have just made that decision that they're going to go forth and obey you. So Father, we thank you for them. And once again, Father, we ask you to have your way, be it only your way, Father God. We surrender it all to you. Father God, touch each and every one. Father, we give you all the praise, all the honor, all the glory in Jesus' mighty name. Amen. Amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor Stenard. Once again, you honor us with your presence, and that prayer was wonderful and word of encouragement. Feel free to stay with us, or you, I know you're very busy. You can certainly depart. We'll, we'll now stand for our pledge of allegiance. The flag is in the Chancellor's boardroom. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Wilkins, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Al Thompson?
Present.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Present.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Present.
Mr. Matthew Woods? Ms. Crystal Brown?
Present.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Present.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Present.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Here.
Mr. Jeff Newman? Governor Kay Ivey? Chairman Thompson, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item is the approval of today's agenda. Board members have received this well in advance of today's meeting. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Motion by Milton.
Motion by Mr. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McAnally. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a voice vote if there are no objections from the board. At this time, all those in favor of approving today's agenda signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? Say no. Anyone opposed, say no. The agenda's approved. Item 5 are the minutes from the last regular meeting, the November 2, 2020 meeting. The members have, board members have received this well in advance of today's meeting. Had a time to review it. At this time, I will entertain a motion on the minutes of the November 11, 2020 meeting.
Move.
Motion by Ms. Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Woods. Any discussion? Any discussion on the minutes of the November 11 meeting? Seeing none, we'll move to a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes of the November 11, 2020 meeting signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Anyone opposed, say no. The minutes are approved. Item 6, public comment. Ms. Wilkins, anyone signed up for public comment?
No, sir.
Section 7, Academic and Student Affairs, Adult Education, Facilities, Fiscal, Information Technology, and Workforce Development. Item 7A1 is a recommendation for Associate's Degree in Applied Science and Criminal Justice at Calvin Community College. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McAnally. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll move to a roll call vote for this. Ms. Wilkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Motion's approved. Item 7A2 is a recommendation for an Associate's Degree in Applied Science and Visual Communications, Multimedia Production Technology. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McAnally. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote on the Associate's Degree in Applied Science and Visual Communications and Multimedia Production Technology at Calvin Community College. Please call the roll, Ms. Wilkins.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matt Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Item 7A3 is a recommendation for a degree in Applied Science and Histolic, for a Histolic Technician at Jefferson State Community College. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion by Milton.
Motion by Mr. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Woods. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll move to a roll call vote, Ms. Wilkins.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matt Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
The Associate in Applied Science and Histolic, for Histolic Technician at Jefferson State Community College is approved. Item 7A4 is a recommendation for a Licensed Practical Nursing Certificate at Enterprise State Community College. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Mitchell. Is there a second?
Second by Milton.
Second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll move to the question. We do a roll call vote on the recommendation for a Licensed Practical Nursing Certificate at Enterprise State Community College. Ms. Wilkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matt Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 7A5 is the recommendation for a degree in Composites, Material Technology Technician at Enterprise State Community College. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Mitchell. Second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote on the recommendation for an Applied Science in Composites, Material Technology, and Technician at Enterprise State Community College. Ms. Wilkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matt Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 7A6 is the request to approve an instructional site in Foley, Alabama, for Coastal Alabama Community College. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion, Chuck.
Second by Chuck. Motion by Mr. Woods, second by Mr. Smith. Discussion? I would just thank Coastal.
I have one quick.
For submitting additional information on this is requested. Mr. Smith?
Yes, one, and this, this may take a pie in the sky number. What do we think the total build out's going to be, including equipment? Does anybody have a guess at it? Is anybody going to take off on the equipment that's going to be needed to, for the facility?
Matt? Matt?
And the reason, and the reason I say that, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, the reason I say that, if we're going to approve these facilities like this, I think we need to go ahead and expedite the request for equipment to go into them rather than waiting for them to be built out, built out, and then start applying for equipment.
At this time, I don't think there's a request for any kind of build out. Forty-six hundred square feet of this is classroom space, already ready to go, and then twenty-four hundred feet of rough warehouse space. They already have the, they've, matter of fact, they've been doing classes since early September, and so I think they're done. They'll probably add stuff to the, I'm speaking a little blind here, but I think they'll add things to the warehouse space eventually and may even expand that. But anyway, I don't think that's an issue. Anyone else?
No, I would just say the additional information that was given, the photos of the inside certainly demonstrate that it's a nice facility, and I think it is ready for, you know, immediate use. As far as classroom space, office space goes, it looks very nice.
Anyone else? Seeing no further discussion, we'll call the question. All those in favor of the additional instructional site in Foley, Alabama, for Coastal Alabama Community College, please signify, and Ms. Wilkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matt Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 7A7, Campus Switch Refresh Project for Gaston State Community College. This was an ad, I believe, under the CARES Act. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Woods. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McAnally. Mr. McAnally?
Yes, the Audit Finance Committee did review this request as it came straight to the board rather than going through a work session. We had conversations with Ben, and he had taken a good look at this. He, in fact, had been working with the people at Gaston State, a project that they had been working on for some time. So we're confident that the things that are being bought are, you know, I guess, standardization, if you will, somewhat. So we, we, as a committee, have reviewed and recommend that this had be brought straight to the board and recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. McAnally. Any further discussion, anything else from the board in regard to this Gaston State item? Once again, Mr. McAnally, thank you to you, Mr. Davis, and Mr. Mitchell, the entire finance committee, for your attendedness to these items that had need to be, needed to bring forward. And Chancellor, thank you and your staff for being on top of this, and all the Presidents, and I think this has worked, worked well during this particular time. Any further?
One more thing, Mr. Chairman, and Phil, to say, you know, there's two different kinds of CARES Act money, and some of it that came directly to the system office had a different deadline than those funds that came directly to the colleges. Some of these funds that come directly to the colleges, it's not the December 5 deadline. But because there is a run on the type of equipment that they need to buy, it was prudent to move forward to try to be able to secure it.
Very good. Thank you again. Any further comments from the board? Seeing none, we have before us a recommendation for Campus Switch Refresh Project at Gaston State Community College. Ms. Wilkins, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matt Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Motion's approved. We're now going to Section 8, Executive Legal and Public Information, 8A1. Do you approve of a mission statement for Jefferson State Community College? At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion by Milton.
Mr. Davis, motion second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brown. Discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote. Ms. Wilkins?
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matt Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Motion, Recommendation for the Mission Statement at Jefferson State Community College is approved. Item 8A2 is a mission statement from Wallace State Community College, Hansville. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Woods. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brown. Discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote on the Mission Statement for Wallace State Community College, Hansville. Ms. Wilkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matt Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 8A3 is a mission statement for J.F. Drake State Community and Technical College. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote on the Mission Statement for J.F. Drake State Community and Technical College. Ms. Wilkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matt Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Item 8A4 is a policy adoption recommendation of 223.01 for information security. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Woods. Open up for discussion. Ms. Brown is Chair of the Policy Committee. Do you have anything on this?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that all three of the policies have been thoroughly vetted by the Policy Committee, Susan Foy, and Matt Woods, and myself, and just appreciate the opportunity to work with Mr. Bates and Ms. Christine from his team at his law firm and the legal staff or legal team at the system office. So we recommend approval as we move forward with the next three. And so, thank you.
Thank you for the work that you and the committee have done, and you've been quite diligent on this and, and some other revisions of policy, and it's, it's been a pretty good load. So thank you for your diligence and your attention to detail. Any, any discussion on this particular item on 223.01 from the rest of the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. We have a recommendation regarding adoption of proposed policy, 223.01, on information security for Alabama Security, Alabama Community College System. Ms. Wilkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matt Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Item eight, A five, is a recommendation regarding adoption of proposed policy two two four point oh one that concerns expressive activity by the campus community. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Foy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Woods. Discussion. I think there were a lot of questions about this, ma'am. We're certainly satisfied in the work session. Any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, we'll call the question. We have before us a recommendation regarding adoption of proposed policy two two one, expressive activities by the campus community. Ms. Wilkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matt Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Motion's approved. Item eight, A six, is a recommendation regarding adoption of proposed policy six oh five point oh two, Faculty Qualifications. Is there a motion?
No move.
Motion by Ms. Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Woods. Discussion. Once again, this was on last month's work session. It's been explained to the board, I think, in detail. Questions have been answered. It's been vetted by the, thoroughly by the Policy Committee. Seeing no further discussion or comments, we'll call the question. We have before us the recommendation regarding adoption of proposed policy six oh five point oh two, Faculty Qualifications. Ms. Wilkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matt Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Proposed policy six oh five point oh two passes. Item, section nine, Personnel. Chancellor, is there anything on personnel today?
Nothing new, except we're trying to keep everybody at work as much as we can. We have some folks who are having to go through a period of time because we've had other people in the building at times with the virus. And so, we're, we're just having to work as best we can with the people that we can get to work on a regular basis. Overall, we've been able to deal with it and go forward without any major, major problems. But it has caused us maybe to be a little slow in some respects on occasions. But I, I feel good about where we are. I think we're moving forward. I just wish that we had as good a focus on the distance learning for all students. We, we're doing, I think, a commendable job, but it's still not like having the occasional face-to-face contact with the students to make sure that they understand the need to be totally focused. It's just been a somewhat difficult task, and we try to guess with the best we can every time what our position is. But it's, it's, it's been working reasonably. Maybe some of our employees might not think so, but they've, they've been working, in many cases, shorthanded and with limited personnel, but we're, we're continuing to fulfill the function that is needed to be met. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any personnel report.
Any committee reports from the board?
Nothing further.
Nothing additionally.
No.
Section eleven, Chancellor's Report.
I think I'm, we're going straight into the work session, and a lot of what we're going to be talking about in the work session, budgets and requests and a variety of things, we can just defer and have one discussion, I think, of work.
Very good. Anything else from the board? We'll go straight into our work session. If there's no objections, once we adjourn. Thanks for everyone's participation, and it was a, a pretty lengthy agenda today. And for those that don't join us on the rest of this, Merry Christmas to everyone and look forward to a great season. At this time, I'll ask, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
There's a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Okay. We'll now begin our work session. We have under the executive, item number one is a request for the name of the science building there at Wallace Community College Dothan. Is there anyone to discuss this? It needs to be done. Let's see, is Mr. O'Brien with us?
I am, sir.
I'm not sure this even needs much explanation, but if there's anyone here on this.
The, the, Mr. Chairman, the college has asked me to, to address this item.
Yes, sir.
And as, as you said, it is the request of the college to, for authority to name the science building as the Wat- Watson Family Science Building and to add appropriate signage to the existing facility, should that request be approved. Dr. Young has included with her request some background with regard to the Watson family and information relating to the very strong support of the Watson family for the college. As a matter of fact, in the last three years, Mr. John Watson has donated one point two million dollars to the college to be used in support of student scholarships on the, on the Wallace campus through the college's foundation. This is in addition to a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar gift that Mr. Watson made during the foundation's major gift campaign in two thousand and six. The final point, the Watson family's company, Smiths, Inc., has been a key employer of the college's career and technical program graduates. The estimated cost for the proposed signage is ten thousand dollars. Does anyone have any questions regarding this item?
I'd just like to echo what Dr. Young said about the Watson family's commitment to this community and Wallace College.
Anyone else? I, I just know the, I just know the family reputation. We, we've been business partners with them over the years. It's pretty exceptional. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, the, the next item is the request for approval to adopt proposed policy six oh two point oh one relating to the appointment and assignment of personnel. The proposed new policy is derived from the old state board policy with some revisions. One of those revisions is to base appointments and assignments on the credentials, experience, and/or demonstrated competencies as determined by the college's president. The proposed policy also includes a provision for the reversal of appointments that are determined to be contrary to statute, policy, or procedure. That authority rests with the college's president with a requirement that the chancellor be notified of any such reversals. In the prior policy, that authority rested with the chancellor. Another change from the old policy is to add language allowing for a employee of one of the institutions to transfer to the system office and employees of the system office to transfer to one of the system institutions with the approval of the respective president and the chancellor. This policy also includes a new provision for the process for those transfers, which starts with a written request being made by the employee in question. Does anyone have any questions regarding this proposed new policy? The, the next item is a proposed revision to an existing Board of Trustees policy, that being policy six ten point oh one. The sole proposed revision to the policy relates to section three point one oh, dealing with the transfer of accumulated sick leave from one employer to another. The proposed revision is for the purposes of clarification as to what employers a college must accept accumulated sick leave. The language in the revision is taken verbatim from the statute in question, and the other revision to this policy relates to the transfer of sick leave from a, another state agency that's not listed. In other words, the, the sick leave is not required to be accepted by the college. In those circumstances, the president is given discretion to approve or disapprove the transfer of the sick leave, but the president is directed that in exercising that discretion, the factors used must be applied consistently. Does anyone have any questions regarding the revision to proposed policy six ten point oh one? We'll move to the, to the next policy, which is the proposal to adopt a new policy six eleven point oh one, dealing with leaves without pay. This policy is also derived from the old state board policy with some rather significant provisions. The first significant revision is the elimination of two categories of leave in the old policy, that being emergency leave and professional development leave. Those two categories have been subsumed into the more generic category of personal leave, which appeared in the old policy and has been carried over to the new policy. Under the old policy, accumulated leave of an employee was not taken into consideration in considering a request for unpaid leave. Under the new policy, an employee must exhaust all accumulated leave prior to be, being entitled to request unpaid leave, both personal and maternity leave. The other change of significance was to reduce the amount of available unpaid leave from twelve months to six months for both personal and maternity leave. Other revisions to the general rules relating to leaves without pay have been made to clarify language in the old policy. Does anyone have any questions relating to proposed policy six eleven point oh one, leaves without pay?
David, the, the reduction, though, still allows for six months of leave. Right? Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. The, the employee will be required to use all of their accrued leave, annual leave, personal leave, or sick leave, and in some circumstances, compensatory leave. But they would be entitled to six consecutive months of unpaid leave after their accrued leave has been exhausted.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say thank you to David and the legal team for working through our questions and, and concerns with Matt and Susan and myself, and we feel good about the policy after having with them.
Very good. That's great to hear.
Mr. Chairman, I, I yield, yield the floor to Sarah Calhoun and, and Boone Kinerd on the, the next item.
Very good.
We have, let me, let me cover this just a minute. I, I know you have seen the news, and there's been a change in who is controlling and managing the Pardon and Parole Board. That change has resulted in a different approach and a somewhat significantly different attitude about prison education in general. And some of that has led to our necessity to amend some of what we had been looking at and talking about. And so, I've asked, Boone and Sarah will proceed and kind of explain that. And I, I would add too, the Budget Office and the Governor's Office has been very lenient and supportive of our effort to make a change in what had already been submitted from our office at the request of the governor. So, just wanted to update.
Chancellor, good morning, everyone. As Chancellor mentioned, this budget request has been slightly modified from what was submitted to the Executive Budget Office in early November. They have been very receptive to the change, as the Chancellor mentioned. The change occurred specifically with prison education funding, and I'm going to let Boone speak to that. I'll, I'll speak to the other items. The majority of the FY twenty-two budget request increases are directed at the college's O and M, prison education, adult ed, and workforce. We also have a ten million dollar request for a new short-term credentialing pilot, I wouldn't call it a pilot program, short-term credentialing program that we hope to help ease some of the burden that the colleges are receiving when it comes to their local workforce needs within their, the prison.
Good morning. As Chancellor Baker mentioned, that, as all of you know, there's been a recent leadership change at the Board of Pardons and Paroles, the Director of the Board of Pardons and Paroles. And as a result, the new leadership is going to be much more supportive. And as a result, the new leadership is going to be much more supportive of existing partnerships that we had in the past. Of course, all of you know about the Life Tech Institute in Thomasville and the situation there where that was phased out under the previous leadership. I know it is a priority of the new leadership to revisit that issue and to hopefully bring that facility back in some form. So we're certainly supportive of that, as well as the Pardons and Paroles Day reporting centers. Those never really took off to the level that we had hoped in terms of the educational and workforce training at those facilities, and that's also a priority of the new leadership at Pardons and Paroles. So as a result of that, we have put those items back in the budget request and look forward to working with the new leadership at Pardons and Paroles to move those items forward. Thank you.
Hey, Boone, this is Chuck. I might ask a question. I see in the budget some discussions or verbiage in there about the Perry County system. Is that on the table somewhere to visit it?
Yes, sir. Our understanding, there have been ongoing conversations for quite a while with the Department of Corrections and the owners of that facility in Perry County. As you know, that's a private, a private facility. And, and our understanding is that you may be hearing something very soon about, about the state potentially purchasing that facility. And so as a result of that, we wanted to put a request in for some money to be able to offer some education and training programs, should that come to fruition.
I, I think the idea would be, the idea would be that that would be a special use facility dealing with mental health and a variety of other kinds of special needs of prisoners.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is Coastal Alabama's request for approval of a renovation project with respect to its cafeteria. I believe we have Ed Watley standing by to address this one.
Thank you, David. Good morning, everyone. If I could, please, get the PowerPoint pulled up. And if you would go to the third slide, please. Coastal Alabama Community College is later this month going to bid a project that involves renovation of an existing administration building and converting it to a cafeteria for their students. This would occur at Coastal Alabama's Baymanet Campus. This project is necessitated by an increase in enrollment at that campus and also an increase in the number of students living on campus. The current kitchen facility has not been updated since it was originally constructed in 1968. The scope of this project includes conversion of an existing administration building space into a cafeteria. We've got 8,800 square feet, approximately renovation, and approximately 5,000 square feet for new kitchen and new serving area. So the total space affected by this project is around 14,000 square feet. Project also will include 1,600 square feet of exterior dining space for the students. Our plan is to bid this project right before Christmas, December 22nd, later this month. And then we'll bring it to the board for consideration and approval in January. Assuming everything goes according to plan, we would start construction in the first quarter of 2021, and we would complete in the fourth quarter of 2021. Still not seeing the presentation, but that's okay. We continue to talk about it. The fourth slide just shows an aerial shot of the Baymanet Campus. Can we get to the fifth slide possibly?
Ezra's having a little bit of trouble. We're working through it right now.
It's not a problem. The fifth slide is a closer aerial view of the, of the campus itself. You can see it there. The building we're looking to renovate is highlighted in yellow. I want to bring out the point that it's a central location there on the campus, which should make it very convenient for the students. Go to the next slide, please. Probably a little bit hard to see at this scale. If we could make it full screen, that would help. But what we're trying to show here, everything shown in blue is the new construction. Everything shown in pink is the existing facility that is to be renovated. And next slide, please. The total budget for this project, we estimate to be 4.6 million dollars. That does include construction, contingency, and also furniture fixtures and equipment that will be needed. Coastal Alabama proposes to pay for this project from their unexpended planned funds. And we will, of course, update the action item once we have the actual results of the bid later this month. I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board might have about this project.
Ed, is this facility also available for the local community?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
I said, is this facility also available for the local community?
I, I would have to defer to Dr. Pouncy on that. I do not know that it is available to the, to the community. But, but if Dr. Pouncy's on, you could either confirm or correct that.
I do not know the answer either. I would point out that this facility serves the dormitories, which are all surrounding that. And condition that exists today with the lesser capacity, they, they have a difficult time getting all the students fed at a normal hour. So that, that's really the most driving issue in this expansion.
Right.
Chancellor, Ed, I, I just heard from Dr. Pouncy, and it, this facility, Mr. Davis's facility, will be available to the community. And I, I think with all our institutions, they, they just need to do this on a, I think it's done on a case-by-case basis because even though you want to be open and involved in the community, and I, and I can just tell you right now, there have been nothing but compliments since Dr. Pouncy has become president at Coastal Alabama. On the, his, the institution's involvement in the local community there in Baymanet and the entire county and the region. So even, you know, all the way, way up to Thomasville. But they have to be also aware of who comes on campus. So that, that's just kind of one thing to always, I know they always keep that on. But yes, and, and I'll add a personal note here. This is, this is sorely needed. I said that during the work, during the call. This is way past due. And I applaud Dr. Pouncy for taking this step. It's going to be a great enhancement to that campus as well as our community.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the, the final item on the agenda is the request for approval of the allocation of a portion of the 2020-2021 industry certification initiative funds. And I believe we have Barry May with us today to discuss this item.
Yes, sir. Good morning. We would like to request your consideration for the allocation of fiscal year 21 industry certification initiative funds for the purpose of providing state matching funds for the $12.1 million Department of Labor scaling and apprenticeship grant that was awarded to ACCS in 2019. This, this grant requires a 35% match, and the amount presented to you today represents a portion of that match as part of our budget that has been approved by the Department of Labor. Calhoun Community College has worked very closely with their industry partners to develop their equipment list in support of their advanced manufacturing technology fame program. This equipment is going to allow Calhoun to continue to grow their fame program, and it will also free up equipment that is currently in use in that fame program that is needed in their other C programs located on the Calhoun's main campus. I'd be glad to take any questions that you may have at this time. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Bryan, anything else to come before the board?
No, sir.
Board members, anything? Any other comments from the board, Chancellor? Nothing else on our agenda? No other comments, no other business? Season's greetings to everybody. Merry Christmas, and stay safe and healthy, and we look forward to a bright new year. We'll stand adjourned.
Thank you, buddy.